Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the World Trade Center Site Five Public Hearing. We will just be waiting one to two minutes while we let people in from the Zoom waiting room, and then we'll get started. Good afternoon, everyone. We're just waiting one more minute as people enter the Zoom meeting and we'll start. All right. Good afternoon, and welcome to the public hearing for the proposed modifications to the World Trade Center Memorial and Cultural Program General Project Plan. My name is Celeste Frye with Public Works Partners, and I've been asked by the New York State Urban Development Corporation, doing business as Empire State Development, or ESD, and the Lower Manhattan Development Corporation, or LMDC, a subsidiary of ESD, Section sixteen of the Urban Development Corporation Act, Chapter one seventy-four, Section one, Laws of nineteen sixty-eight, as amended, or the UDC Act. I will be your hearing officer this evening. Today's hearing is being held pursuant to a legal notice published in accordance with the UDC Act in the December tenth, two thousand twenty-one edition of the New York Daily News. The purpose of this hearing is to inform the public about the proposed modifications and to afford all interested persons an opportunity to provide oral or written statements and to submit other documents concerning the proposed modifications. My purpose is to run the hearing in a fair and impartial manner and to make sure that everyone who wishes to speak has an adequate opportunity to be heard. This evening's event is a hearing, not a question and answer session. It is an opportunity for you to present your views so that LMDC and ESD may consider them in making their final determinations. Please note that this hearing is being recorded for internal purposes. A stenographic transcript is being made and will be available on LMDC's and ESD's websites.
Recording in progress.
I'd like to give some guidance first to help you fully participate in this hearing before we formally begin. We are requiring that only presenters share their video during this hearing. For the best viewing experience, we recommend that all participants enable the feature in Zoom that allows you to show only participants who have their video enabled. These first two screens provide instructions on how to do that, first for a PC or Android device, and then the second screen for a Mac or Apple device. This screen is for those participants who wish to view the hearing with American Sign Language interpretation. This screen explains the options that you have for providing comments on the proposed modifications to the approved plan. If you signed up to speak before the hearing during the registration process, we have your name, and you will be called during the testimony portion of this hearing. If you did not sign up to speak before the start of the hearing, but you would like to speak, please identify yourself using the raise hand function on Zoom. Instructions for this are being shown on your screen now and will be shown again periodically during the hearing. If you're joining us this evening by phone only, you may dial star nine on your keypad to indicate your desire to provide verbal testimony. When you dial star nine, we will receive a message with your phone number. Participants using the raise hand function, or star nine, will be added to the end of the speaker list. The option to sign up to speak will end thirty minutes before the close of the hearing at seven thirty PM. I'll give you a moment to read the instructions before I move on. Again, these instructions will appear periodically during the meeting. Comments presented at this hearing will be taken into consideration by LMDC and ESD as part of the final review of the proposed modifications. You'll also have the opportunity to send in your comments via the email and mailing addresses provided on the screen now. For those joining us by phone, the email address is WTCsitefive, that's W T C S I T E five, at esd.ny.gov. Comments may also be mailed to six thirty-three Third Avenue, thirty-seventh floor, New York, New York, one zero zero one seven, to ESD. Attention, WTCsitefive, proposed amendment. Comments will be accepted until five o'clock PM on February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. This information is also available on the LMDC and ESD websites. The website's listed on your screen now, esd.ny.gov/wtcsitefive. Before we begin the testimony portion of this meeting to hear your comments, we will hear from Toby Jayasimi, Assistant Vice President at ESD. In addition to Toby, a number of other representatives from the ESD and LMDC project team are with us this evening and will be listening to all the comments delivered tonight. Attendees with us include Holly Light, Chair of the LMDC Board of Directors, Dan Sinello, LMDC President, Goldie Wechsler, Acting General Counsel at ESD, Matthew Acocella, Associate Counsel at ESD and LMDC, Marian Phillips, Senior Vice President of Community Relations, ESD, Francisco Polanco, Director of Community Relations, ESD, Terrence Cho, Real Estate Development and Planning, ESD, Iran Godri, Senior Director, Planning and Environmental Review, ESD, Rachel Schatz, Vice President for Planning and Environmental Review, ESD, Philip McGuire, Vice President for Design and Construction, ESD, Derek Utter, Chief Development Officer at the Port Authority of New York and New Jersey, Matt Peterson, Assistant Director of Real Estate Port Authority, and Justin Bernbach, Director of Government and Community Relations at the Port Authority. These representatives will be in attendance throughout this hearing. Before we begin the comment portion of today's session, I'd like to introduce Toby Jayasimi of ESD who'll present a summary of the proposed modifications to the GPP.
Thank you, Celeste. Thank you for joining tonight's public hearing on the World Trade Center Site Five project. My name is Toby Jayasimi, and I am Assistant Vice President of Real Estate and Community Relations at ESD. I am joined tonight by the ESD and LMDC World Trade Center Site Five project team, members of the LMDC Board of Directors, and representatives of the Port Authority. As stated earlier, the purpose of tonight's hearing is to give the public the opportunity to deliver oral comments on the proposed modifications to the World Trade Center General Project Plan. Site Five, which is located at one thirty Liberty Street, is the location of the former Deutsche Bank Building, which was severely damaged on nine eleven. The Lower Manhattan Development Corp. used US Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, community development block grant funds to acquire, remediate, and clear Site Five. The World Trade Center Memorial and Cultural Program General Project Plan was originally adopted by LMDC, a subsidiary of ESD, in two thousand and four to provide for memorial and cultural uses as well as commercial redevelopment of the World Trade Center after the September eleven attacks. The approved plan provides for five commercial towers, public open space, and a performing arts center surrounding the nine eleven memorial and memorial museum. The plan contemplated commercial and/or hotel use on Site Five. In February two thousand and six, the Port Authority and LMDC entered into a memorandum of understanding by which LMDC would swap one thirty and one forty Liberty Street, including Site Five, with the Port Authority for property it owned at the center of the campus to enable the nine eleven memorial and museum as well as the performing arts center to be built within and proximate to the footprints of the Twin Towers. The nine eleven memorial and the nine eleven memorial museum were opened in two thousand and eleven and two thousand and fourteen, respectively. In response to Community Board One input, LMDC began discussions with the Port Authority in two thousand and seventeen about allowing for either commercial or mixed-use development at Site Five. In two thousand and nineteen, LMDC and the Port Authority entered into another memorandum of understanding to jointly issue a request for proposals for Site Five that would allow for, as of right, commercial development or mixed-use development, including a requirement for an affordable housing component which would require modifications to the general project plan. In February twenty twenty-one, after a competitive process, a mixed-use development proposed by a team comprising Silverstein Properties, Dubois Development, Omni New York, and Brookfield Properties was conditionally designated by the LMDC Board of Directors. The proposed project includes residential rental housing with twenty-five percent of the units permanently affordable, office space, ground-floor retail, a twelve thousand square foot community facility, and fitness and amenity spaces, as well as a direct connection to the adjacent Liberty Park. If the proposed project, which will be the subject of a separate public process, is approved, ownership of Site Five would transfer from LMDC to ESD, which would serve as landlord for the Site Five long-term lease, since LMDC will cease operations once the HUD block grant is closed out. Consistent with the planned swap and the memorandum of understanding mentioned earlier, all rent payments would go to the Port Authority as compensation for the nine eleven memorial and museum and performing arts center sites. Since conditional designation of the development team, LMDC, ESD, and the Port Authority have made multiple presentations to Community Board One and local elected officials and held regular meetings with the World Trade Center Site Five Community Advisory Committee, or CAC. Feedback from these stakeholders has been instrumental in shaping multiple aspects of the proposed project, including programming, design, and public access to the building. There's also been extensive discussion about the affordability requirements for the proposed project. The Site Five RFP required that any mixed-use proposal comply with the affordability levels of the city's mandatory inclusionary housing program. The proposed project would include approximately twelve hundred residential units and twenty-five percent of the units, approximately three hundred units, would be permanently affordable to households making an average of fifty percent of area median income, which currently equates to approximately forty-two thousand for an individual and scaling up to sixty thousand for a family of four. Some community representatives and elected officials have called for more affordable housing, including some that the project be up to one hundred percent affordable, with a preference for people who lived or worked in the area on and right after nine eleven. The project team is engaged in ongoing discussions about the project's affordability and participated in a December public forum sponsored by local elected officials on the issue. It should be noted that approval of the developer's proposed project, as well as the disposition of the site and related transactions with the conditionally designated development team are not part of the actions subject to public comment at tonight's public hearing or during the current comment period. Those actions will be the subject of future public hearing and comment period after being presented to the LMDC and ESD Boards of Directors later this year. The current action is strictly to modify the general project plan to allow for mixed-use development in addition to the already approved commercial use. The chart on the screen provides a summary of the proposed modifications to the current approved plan. As stated before, the World Trade Center General Project Plan currently allows for commercial use on Site Five. A tower developed under the approved GPP would be subject to the existing commercial design guidelines. The proposed modifications would permit greater flexibility in use, allowing for mixed-use development, including the requirement of permanently affordable housing and community facility use in addition to commercial use. It also would provide for a direct connection to Liberty Park via a pedestrian bridge. To reflect the addition of residential use, draft mixed-use design guidelines have been prepared and are subject to public review and comment as well. The impacts of the currently approved plan on Site Five were studied in the two thousand and four Final Generic Environmental Impact Statement. To adequately assess whether any new or substantially different, significant, adverse environmental impacts could result from the currently proposed modifications to the GPP and environmental assessment, or EA, was compared pursuant to the National Environmental Policy Act and the State Environmental Quality Review Act. This EA concludes that the proposed GPP modifications would not result in any new potential significant adverse environmental impacts not previously identified in the project's environmental review and that a supplemental environmental impact statement is not required. On November seventeen and November eighteen, two thousand twenty-one, LMDC and ESD Directors respectfully approved the start of the public review process for the modifications to the World Trade Center General Project Plan and based on the environmental assessment made of finding of no significant impact for Fonzie and determination of non-significance. In the spring, the LMDC and ESD Boards of Directors will consider the public comments made here tonight, as well as any written comments received up until February fifteen, two thousand twenty-two, and will take action on the proposed modifications to the general project plan. Again, please note that approval of the proposed project, the disposition of the site, and related transactions with the conditionally designated development team will be the subject of a future public hearing and comment period after being presented to the LMDC and ESD Directors. The public comment period will remain open until five PM on Tuesday, February fifteen, two thousand twenty-two. Comments may be submitted via email or email using the addresses provided on the screen. Thank you for taking the time to participate in tonight's hearing, and I look forward to your comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Toby. Now, I'd like to take care of some administrative matters by asking the stenographer to mark the following documents as exhibits to the hearing transcript. Exhibit one, a copy of the public hearing notice that appeared in the New York Daily News, along with the affidavit of publication. Exhibit two, the general project plan and the proposed modifications to the general project plan. And exhibit three, the finding of no significant impact and the environmental assessment. Thank you for marking those exhibits. Now, as we prepare to begin the testimony portion of this hearing, I will once again share instructions for those who wish to view the meeting with American Sign Language interpretation. As I mentioned at the start of this hearing, if you signed up to speak during the hearing registration process, we have your name, and you will be called in the order in which you registered. If you did not sign up to speak before the start of the hearing but would like to speak, please identify yourself using the raise hand function on Zoom. Instructions for this are being shown on your screen right now and will be shown periodically during the hearing. If you are joining us by phone only, you may dial star nine on your keypad to indicate your desire to provide testimony. Participants who use the raised hand function, or star nine, will be added to the speaker list. The option to sign up to speak will end thirty minutes before the close of this hearing, which will be at seven thirty PM. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes to speak to assure that everyone has a chance to provide their thoughts here tonight. I'll begin by calling the names of those who have registered to speak or the first and last three digits of your phone number, if you're using the telephone dial-in option. Elected officials, community board, district managers or chairs, and representatives of a government agency will be provided the courtesy of speaking first. Periodically, we will show a list of the next ten speakers on your screen so that you can prepare for your turn to speak. When your name or the first and last three digits of your phone number are called, you will be prompted to unmute yourself on Zoom, and we will make sure you're ready before you begin speaking and we start the time clock. You may scroll or swipe on your screen to see the time clock to remind yourself of the length of time left for your testimony. When three minutes have passed, your audio will be muted, and you'll be invited to send any remaining comments to ESD's mailing or email address. When you begin to speak, please state your name and affiliation if you have one for the record. As a reminder, this is a public hearing for the proposed modifications to the World Trade Center Memorial and Cultural Program General Project Plan. We encourage all speakers to focus your comments on the proposed modifications. We also ask that speakers exercise civil conduct during your testimony. Speakers using inappropriate language will be muted and cautioned before being allowed to continue. Please also be reminded that this is a hearing, not a question and answer session. Before we begin with our registered speaker list, we'd first like to welcome some of our elected officials who have requested time to provide comments. Our first speaker will be Emily Lang. Emily Lang, you may unmute yourself and prepare to speak.
Hi, this is Emily. I'm very sorry, actually working through a technical difficulty with my computer right now. Would it be possible to come back to me in a moment?
Sure, we'll go to the other priority speakers and then come back to you, Emily.
All right, thank you.
So our next speaker will be Amy Vera. Amy Vera, you may unmute yourself and get ready to speak.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Hi, my name is Amy Vera. I'm the community liaison to Assembly Member Yuli Nu. I'll be providing a statement related to a letter that was sent out to the agencies on behalf of the Assembly member, the members online, but she is currently traveling right now via train from legislative session. I am requesting that you remove the guidelines that are currently part of the proposed mixed-use design guidelines for the general project plan for Site Five of the World Trade Center. I request that we schedule a meeting with community stakeholders to discuss and revise the guidelines prior to approval. I recognize and commend the expansion of uses for the site to include mixed use, such as residential use, community facilities, and fitness facilities. However, community stakeholders... However, community stakeholders have brought concerns that the guidelines as written will bind the project to a sign for a luxury building, making a fully affordable building prohibitively expensive. For months, our community has been informed that the GPP approval process was solely to authorize a residential building. However, as clarified in the Community Board One meeting on December thirteenth, the GPP change now includes guidelines that would legally restrict the design and material of the building. Attaching such specific guidelines to the GPP at this time is also problematic and confusing to our community, especially at this early point of the project. The term guidelines is misleading as it suggests that they are not binding, while further language and definitions of shall as mandatory and will as permissive in the documents indicates otherwise. The community design guidelines developed by Studio Livesign appear to mandate a specific design. The intent of these guidelines extend beyond simply seeking approval for a residential building or mixed-use buildings, extensive community facilities and provides mandatory design elements that seem to limit fully affordable housing at the site. Thank you all for participating in Five World Trade Center Forum December ninth and committing to working with elected officials and community stakeholders like Community Board One and the Coalition for a Hundred Percent Affordable World Trade Center Five. We must continue discussing this vital opportunity and ensure that community is engaged in every aspect of this project such as full affordability for residential use areas, promoting environmental sustainability, utilizing commercial space to match community needs and expanding community space. I look forward to continuing to work with you all and your colleagues on this critical project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker will be Christopher Marta.
Uh, thank you, Marte.
Marte, thank you. You may begin.
Hi, everyone. My name is Christopher Marte, Councilmember of District One in Lower Manhattan. Thank you, ESD and LMDC for hosting this hearing. Uh, this is the kind of transparency and opportunity for public participation that is greatly encouraged. And I hope that all the comments we hear today are strongly considered. This is extremely rare opportunity to build affordable housing in Lower Manhattan. There may not be, there are not a lot of public owned sites like this. And the opportunity to build one hundred percent affordable housing should not be missed. The families that will be able to benefit from living in a transit-rich neighborhood is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. The children that will benefit from going to the best schools that our city has to offer is a once-in-a-lifetime uh, opportunity. A hundred percent affordable housing at World Trade Center will show New Yorkers and the rest of the world that affordable housing is a major priority for New York and that New York City will stand as the center of opportunity for all people. We should not be sacrificing true affordability for design and aesthetics. If the current design and construction cannot support one hundred percent affordability, then we have to find a different design and rewrite the guidelines. This is not a natural limitation, but a choice. And I recommend the city, the state, to choose one hundred percent affordable. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker will be Victoria Fariello. Victoria Fariello, you may unmute yourself and get ready to speak.
Hi, thank you. Um, so thank you to the LMDC and the ESD for hosting this hearing. And I also want to thank them. I'm Victoria Fariello. I'm a district leader of Lower Manhattan. And I'm also a member of the Coalition for a Hundred Percent Affordable Five World Trade Center. I do want to thank LMDC and ESD for hosting this hearing and also for agreeing uh, to work with us at the forum and the December ninth forum to come to a better to come to affordability, a hundred percent affordability of Five World Trade. It is incredibly important, as you've heard, um, our assembly member and our um, city council member say, that affordability downtown is crucial. We've lost over five thousand affordable apartments in the last fifteen years. And this would be an amazing opportunity to make a statement and to help make our, our neighborhood whole again. Um, Five World Trade Center is a social justice issue. And I do ask that the environmental impact study consider this as well and to look into what is the environmental impact of bringing in eighty percent or seventy-five percent luxury apartments. We really do need to make our neighbors and our, and our community whole again. And we ask that you please do not include these guidelines that do bind the building to a very expensive design and reconsider and allow for a, another opportunity to build something that would be entirely affordable. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Emily Lang. Emily Lang, if you're ready to speak now, you may unmute yourself and let us know when you're ready to start. Emily Lang, were you able to rejoin? Okay, we'll move on. And if Emily Lang is able to join us again, please raise your hand or email um, the help@publicworkspartners.com email address to let us know. We'll now move on to the first uh, ten registered speakers, excuse me. I'll read all ten names, and if you hear your name on this list of ten, you know that you'll speak likely within the next thirty minutes. So the list of speakers is Leslie Koch, Carl Rodriguez, Carol Lambert, Jessica Lepin, Grace Lee, Adam Messiter, Taylor Banning, Jenny Chow, Mike Markucci, and Louisa Colon. It is our understanding that Carl Rodriguez and Grace Lee, while registered, are not on the call at this time. If, if you are present or a representative is present, please email help@publicworkspartners.com. That's help@publicworkspartners.com. It's also at the bottom of your screen and let us know. So with that, we'll invite Leslie Koch to speak. Leslie Koch, if you're um, ready, let me know when you're ready.
Hi, how are you? My name is Leslie Koch and I'm president of the Ronaldo Perelman Performing Arts Center, which is located on the World Trade Center site. As many in the community know, uh, that Performing Arts Center is under construction and you can see uh, it rising. And it was very much conceived as part of the master plan alluded to at the beginning of this meeting. Um, I am speaking in support of the plan. Uh, the plan adds a degree of vitality with mixed use, uh, mixed residential use as well as community facilities that I think is very important for the site and for Lower Manhattan. Lower Manhattan has experienced a revitalization uh, with an increase in residents on the World Trade Center campus site today. Uh, there are many visitors who come to the memorial and museum. And there are, of course, many office workers who work in Towers Three, Four, or Tower One. The proposed plan would add a residential component and a full-time residence. Uh, and we at the Performing Arts Center certainly welcome the opportunity to serve those residents uh, with a mix of programming that is planned uh, at the opening of the Performing Arts Center. The importance of round-the-clock activity on the World Trade Center site was recognized early on uh, in the inclusion of a Performing Arts Center. And the modifications to the plan uh, strengthen that focus by permitting uh, a re-modification for residential use. The building as currently designed has a mix of facilities available to the public, uh, including ground for retail, the connection to the park, um, and very importantly, a community facility. Um, this means that in addition to those workers and the visitors who come from around the world, there will be individuals and families who uh, live uh, on the former World Trade Center site um, and are part of the Lower Manhattan community, living, continuing the tradition of many people who live in Lower Manhattan who also work in Lower Manhattan, shopping, socializing, sending their children to school. The permanent affordability requirement ensures that the residents of the new proposed building will represent the economic diversity of Lower Manhattan. And we know uh, that community facilities and community access are very important to all of the development of the World Trade Center site. Um, at the Performing Arts Center, we will have free and open access and free programming for the community. And in the proposed Tower Five as currently conceived, a community facility will complement that uh, with the potential to attract and serve a diverse array of users from the community, diverse in age, um, economic circumstance, ethnicity, um, et cetera. And uh, the programming that will be available to them in that facility will help increase the vitality of the community.
Thank you. Your, your three minutes have actually been completed. Thank you very much. Um, our next speaker will be Carol Lambert. Carol Lambert, you may um, unmute, yeah? Hello, Carol Lambert. Yep, there you are. If you can, oh. Um, Carol Lambert, I think you're having some technical difficulties. Yes, can you, uh, if you can unmute yourself, we're ready for you to speak.
Unmute?
Yes, that was perfect. Nope, now you're muted again. That's good.
Okay. Uh, my name is Carol Lambert.
Oh. Carol, I think you, you muted yourself again. I think you may have left your cursor on the mute button. If you can try unmeeting again, you may start over. Alright, Carol, we are working on trying to make sure you're able to unmute. Um, give us just a moment. Can you? Can you, when someone asks you to unmute, if you get a message saying, unmute, can you press that button? No? Okay. Um, Carol, if you, if you want to try again later or if you'd like to submit your testimony in written form, it will, it will be considered in exactly the same way. I'm apologies for that you haven't um, been able to do this, but we can, if you want to raise your hand, if you want to try again later. Okay, alright, we're gonna move to the next speaker. Um, Carol, we will, um, we'll, we'll try to work with you again a little bit later to, to, to try to speak again. Our next speaker will be Jessica Lepin. Jessica, I see your videos on. You may unmute and talks begin when you're ready.
Hi, I'm Jessica Lepin, and I appreciate this opportunity. Over the last twenty years, Lower Manhattan has really experienced a tremendous renaissance and transformation and what was once an overwhelming commercial district, I say as the president of the Downtown Alliance, the bid in Lower Manhattan, has really become a vibrant mixed community with sixty-three thousand residents and thousands of restaurants and retail. And really, the, the World Trade Center site has been at the heart of that renaissance. And Brookfield and Silverstein's proposed development would really go a long way towards finishing. We're not done. We have two buildings to build. We need to build this building and contribute to our long-term success and prosperity. And we have long advocated for continuing the direction of mixed-use development in Lower Manhattan. The retail and residential that's being proposed at Site Five are very consistent with the broader plan and the principles that have guided us over two decades since the attacks. Bringing new residents in will obviously help and be more important than ever given COVID in terms of supporting our local economy. Unfortunately, far too little affordable housing has been built in Lower Manhattan. That was a mistake and something this can rectify. While over twenty-one thousand units have been built since two thousand, only five hundred and fifty-two have been affordable. This current proposal would deliver five times the number of affordable units and do, uh, in a typical year without public subsidy, create sort of deep, permanent affordability. And so we, we do urge the state to work with the development team to increase and maximize the affordable units that will be available in this project. Uh, one of the girliest goals embraced was reconnecting the campus to the surrounding community. And this retail on Granite Street will help do that um, and, and really restore Granite Street as an active and pedestrian-friendly corridor. And while I would say the proposed project has many benefits for Lower Manhattan, uh, it, it could also pose some challenges logistically, and this is a densely populated community. We do very much encourage ESDC to work with the developers to plan appropriately for managing access to the site both during and after construction about deliveries, waste management, and, and how it's all gonna function long-term. Um, I would lastly say we most ardently advocated for the left turn on West Street from Albany Street, uh, something our, our founding departed chairman was particularly passionate about. It's a simple change. DOT should approve it. We've been talking about it forever. It would substantially improve conditions in the Battery Park City and make vehicle access to the site much easier. And in closing, we believe the project at Site Five is a thoughtful response to the needs of our community. We support it. We think it's consistent with the longstanding and broadly supported goals that have been articulated over the last two decades. The modifications that have been made would provide the option for mixed-use development, a residential tower with permanent affordable housing, a community facility, new retail, a connection to Liberty Park, in addition to the already permitted commercial use. And so without the proposed modifications, Site Five would just be developed as a commercial tower. I think we strongly encourage ESDC to approve the WTC general project plan to include housing at the World Trade Center Site of Five, and I'm done.
Thank, thank you very much. Um, we'll move on to our next speaker, who will be Grace Lee. Grace, uh, Grace Lee, if you have now joined us and it looks like you are ready to speak. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Grace Lee and I'm a longtime Lower Manhattan resident. I'm here today to amplify the voices of the community who are calling for Five World Trade Center to be one hundred percent affordable housing. And I ask you to reject any design guidelines that would be a barrier to securing one hundred percent affordable housing at this site. New York is facing a housing crisis right now with some two-bedroom apartments in Lower Manhattan, uh, Manhattan renting for over six thousand dollars per month and luxury units standing empty because no one can afford them. This is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to create affordable housing opportunities and specifically for September eleventh survivors and their families, first responders and seniors. The people who stayed in Lower Manhattan after the towers fell rebuilt the city even as they developed cancer and other serious diseases. And now they are being priced out of their homes. I've heard some people argue it would be more efficient to be, build affordable housing elsewhere. It doesn't have to be either or. It should be both and. There's no substitute for the symbolic value of making Five World Trade Center one hundred percent affordable. The committee members who rebuilt this neighborhood deserve more than where they can't afford to live. They saved this neighborhood and deserve to stay in it. And what could be a greater living tribute to them than a place that they can all call home? This is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, and I hope that you seriously consider this. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Adam Messiter. Adam, let us know when you're ready to begin.
Uh, good evening. Hi, uh, my name's Adam Meister. It's actually M-E-I-S-T-E-R. Thank you.
Excuse me.
Uh, but more importantly, uh, having worked in uh, the local community for a number of years for Howard Hughes Corporation on a range of improvements, I'm pleased to express my strong support of the proposed modification to the World Trade Center general project plan to include housing at Five World Trade Center. World Trade Center. The proposed building would be an ideal addition to the Trade Center and reflects Lower Manhattan's evolution as a mixed-use community. The project will deliver a much-needed infusion of housing, particularly permanent deeply affordable units, to address the substantial need for affordable housing in Lower Manhattan. Over the last 20 years, the community has suffered from the loss of units due to privatization of nearby co-ops, the removal of rental units from Mitchell Lama, and the expiration of property tax abatement programs that helped to keep housing developments affordable. Five World Trade's mixed-income approach would alone deliver five times the number of new affordable homes produced across all of downtown in a typical year, and will do it without public subsidy that is better spent elsewhere to create units in other communities where those dollars can be more effectively deployed. Not only will Five World Trade bring much-needed housing and round out the World Trade Center campus, the development will also help spur the city's recovery from the pandemic. The project will create 10,000 new construction jobs, nearly 2,000 new permanent jobs, and generate $1.9 billion in economic output, bringing much-needed spending to small businesses downtown. I'm eager to see the highly capable partnership of Brookfield, Silverstein, and others bring this dynamic mixed-use residential project to fruition, and I encourage the state to move it forward as expeditiously as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Taylor Banning. Taylor Banning, if you are ready to speak. Yep, you may begin when you're ready.
Thank you. Thank you to ESD and the Lower Manhattan Development Corporation for hosting this hearing and giving the community a chance to speak. My name is Taylor Banning. She/her pronouns, and I'm a lifelong resident of Lower Manhattan. I'm also a 9/11 child survivor and a co-founder of the Coalition for 100% Affordable Housing at Five World Trade Center. Our coalition is advocating for 100% affordable housing at this site to bring equity, inclusion, access, and genuinely affordable housing, hopefully over 1,200 units to this site, with emphasis on 9/11 survivors and first responders. And while our coalition supports the call for this becoming a residential, the chance residential building at this site, we do oppose the addition of the new design guidelines that would lock in this current proposal for a luxury tower with inadequate amount of affordable housing. So we are seeking full affordability, residential use at this site, but do reject these restrictive guidelines that prevent a chance for a more affordable tower to be built here. And we'd just like to note that, you know, as a resident who has watched my community build back and LMDC, which was formed with funds to help us build back our community, one of the focuses was meant to be on bringing more affordable housing here. And sadly, we have not delivered that. And we are calling on our elected officials on the LMDC, this is a chance to bring our missing and lacking, much-needed affordable housing. Sadly, over time, the emphasis on more luxury and big business and big developers has left us, especially here in Community Board One, where the site falls, to be a residentially segregated community, and we need to change that. And part of the funds that HUD was founded to do and bring was to desegregate, and we're calling for that here. We need to integrate our community. 9/11 survivors are not all white and wealthy. It is a multiracial community suffering from 9/11-related illnesses and the need for housing. And we have wonderful access to resources here in Lower Manhattan, and we need to make sure equal access is given by race, by health, and this is a chance to do that. So please, we call for 100% affordable. Please do not box in these guidelines. This is a chance to do something historic and much-needed, and it's a choice we can all make to do it together. So I hope we all have the will to do it. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker will be Jenny Chow. Jenny Chow, if you're ready to speak. You may begin. Thank you.
Hi there. I am a longtime resident of Manhattan and very recently, in the last over five years, a resident of Lower Manhattan. And I worked and lived in the city when 9/11 happened, so I have big ties also to the city. I think that what is being proposed for mixed-use is a wonderful opportunity. I highly, highly support it. I think our downtown is missing a lot of new residential opportunities. And now, while the goal for 100% affordability is wonderful, and I advocate for it as a person of minority and color, I just don't think it's realistic and that any kind of affordable housing is a win. From what I've seen, the proposed plan would allow for at least like 300 permanently affordable units, and that's amazing. That's totally something to fight for, to have only 100% affordable. I don't think, from a resident point of view, I don't think that's viable, because everything will get locked up in the government. Now, I may be wrong. However, any amount, I think, is a win. On top of that, the proposal is given by a group of developers and and, excuse me, a group of developers and property owners that have really been a part of this rebuilding of the World Trade Center, and I do feel like they are well-qualified for this job. I also think that it's important to just note that it will bring a lot of jobs if this project goes ahead. And if it doesn't, if it's locked up in this fight between all 100% affordable versus some affordable, I don't think it'll ever get finished. And as someone who's lived here for all of her life, I would really love to see it done in my lifetime. On top of that, I think that it will really play a critical role in our recovery from the pandemic. As someone who lived here through all of that, I would like to see more jobs come back, jobs for blue-collar workers, like construction workers, generating the kind of revenue that it needs for this city. I also would like to just say that this housing crisis is I have no words for it. And again, any amount of affordable housing in the proposal, I think, is necessary. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker, we'd like to invite Emily Ling back to speak, who was an earlier speaker who had some technical difficulties. So Emily Ling, if you're ready to speak, you may begin when you're ready.
All right, yes, thank you, and really sorry about the earlier difficulties. My name is Emily Wang. I'm a community liaison for State Senator Brian Kavanaugh, and I'll be reading comments on behalf of Senator Kavanaugh, Congressman Gerald Nadler, State Assembly Member Yulie Nguyen, and Manhattan Borough President Mark Levine. And apologies, I will be reading pretty quickly to try and keep this under three minutes. We submit for your consideration the following comments regarding LMDC and ESD's proposed adoption of the proposed modifications to the World Trade Center Memorial and Cultural Program general project plan. We appreciate LMDC and ESD's willingness and agreement to keep the public comment period open until February 15, 2022, in response to our joint letter on November 16. To begin, we want to express our support for the goals of the proposed modification, to expand the uses permitted at Site Five to allow for the development of a mixed-use tower with residential fitness and community facility uses. We believe that a mixed-use residential tower at this site would be an appropriate addition to the Lower Manhattan community, most especially to the extent it provides for affordable housing. We are aware, of course, that the current proposed development provides for 25% of the residential units to be permanently affordable. Over the past several months, we and many community advocates have strongly expressed the view that 25% is simply not enough, especially for a community that has been losing affordability at an alarming rate for many years. We appreciated your participation in that of the Port Authority and New York State Homes and Community Renewal at our virtual public forum to discuss affordability on December 9, and your commitments to working with us and the community on this issue. We continue to maintain that maximizing affordability at this site must be a key priority, and that every effort should be made to consider various financing sources and other measures in order to ensure a maximum number of permanently affordable units. We recognize that the proposed amendment to the GPP calls for a minimum of 25% affordable units, and we ask that a sentence be included in the amendment that confirms that the agencies will make every effort to reach maximum affordability at the site. The proposed amendment also includes a draft set of mixed-use design guidelines that would be administered for any mixed-use development on the site. We believe that the mixed-use design guidelines, as currently drafted, are too restrictive and not sufficiently conducive to increasing affordability. The guidelines currently include language that mandates aspects of the building to a specific design, and may not provide enough flexibility to maximize the number of affordable units by making adjustments to lower construction or operating costs. We request that the mixed-use design guidelines be revised to be more permissive in the variety of design options that may be considered and allow for the greatest flexibility possible when it is in the service of maximizing affordability. The design guidelines also lay out the square foot distribution for potential scenarios envisioned for the mixed-use tower. In the maximum residential option, there's currently 36,000 square feet for a fitness and social center and 13,000 for a community facility. This neighborhood currently lacks sufficient public community spaces, especially dedicated senior spaces and recreational areas for students and children. Given that this will be a large residential building that is located in an increasingly mixed-use neighborhood, we hope to see increased community space to the extent feasible. Similarly, there is currently 12,000 square feet for retail in the maximum residential option. As the neighborhood continues to become more residential, we ask that you prioritize community geared retail spaces, including potential options such as a grocery store or pharmacy. And finally, with regards to the sustainability standards, we recognize that the current guidelines state that the building must meet LEED gold standards and comply with the sustainable design guidelines applicable to a mixed-use building. We believe that these standards are baseline requirements and ask that you look into and consider implementing additional sustainability guidelines that go beyond what is currently proposed. In particular, recognizing that both the governor and her recent State of the State address, the legislature in the form of proposed legislation, and the state bodies working on implementation of the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act have all proposed requiring all new buildings to be all-electric, we ask that the sustainability standards include the requirement that the tower be all-electric to the maximum extent possible. As the final piece of the World Trade Center to be rebuilt, we believe that Site Five is a significant opportunity to bring large-scale affordable housing to Lower Manhattan and design a community-centered building that would enrich the lives of all who live and work in the area. We appreciate your consideration of these comments, and we will also be submitting them as a written comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your testimony and for coming back. Our next speaker will be Mike Marcucci. Mike Marcucci, you may enable your video and unmute yourself. Let us know when you're ready to begin.
Okay, I think I'm ready.
Great.
Hi, good evening. My name's Mike Marcucci. I'm a filmmaker, and I've been working downtown since 2004 filming the reconstruction of the World Trade Center, and it's been an absolute pleasure to watch the neighborhood transform into the lovely site that it is, and personally a thrill to document the great undertaking. In 2012, I produced a documentary called 16 Acres. This chronicle the first 10 years of the rebuilding of the World Trade Center. So I've had a front row seat to the rebuilding process, and it's been quite a job. So I've been a passionate viewer and really have a terrific interest in what gets built, where it gets built, and when all these new buildings will be completed. And so far, I think, through all the difficult battles and compromises, what has been accomplished is truly a beautiful World Trade Center site. And from what I see from the renderings, I think Five World Trade Center will make a beautiful addition, and I'm thrilled that it's proposed mixed-use residential building with a significant portion dedicated to low and middle-income housing. And I really hope the affordable housing issue gets settled soon, because I think this building needs to get going so the site can be completed. I'm also glad it will generate many thousands of construction jobs. I think this is really important. In these troubled times with the pandemic still upon us, workers deserve great projects like this. So just in summation, as a lifelong New Yorker, I really look forward to seeing Five World Trade Center and the rest of the site completed. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Luisa Colon. Luisa Colon, if you are ready to speak, you may turn on your video and unmute your audio.
Hi, thanks so much for having me. I'm also a lifelong New Yorker, born and raised in New York, and the World Trade Center site has obviously undergone tremendous transformation over my lifetime. I also believe that affordable housing, any amount, is a huge win for this city, but I also think that it makes far more sense to have a greater mix of uses at this site in order to create a very vibrant 24/7 community and also address the evolving needs of Lower Manhattan. A building focused on mixed-income housing will complement the office towers, the Performer Center, retail, memorial, but it also reflects the transformation of Lower Manhattan over the past 20 years. I also think it's really important to note that Lower Manhattan has this severe shortage of affordable housing, the limited number of sites to address this crisis. Five World Trade Center by itself would deliver five times the number of affordable homes produced across all of Lower Manhattan in a typical year. Do it without public subsidy and with deep, permanent affordability. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker will be Carol Lambert. Carol, if you are back with us, I think we may be able to get your testimony at this time.
Hey.
Hi, Carol Lambert, if that's you, you may begin. We can hear you. All right. Oh, here we are. All right, Carol, if you could unmute yourself. You're speaking, but we can't hear you.
Okay.
Perfect.
Okay. I'm on my iPad. I'm Carol Lambert. I've worked in the affordable housing trade all my life, starting in college years. In 2002, I testified advocating for affordable housing as part of the World Trade Center redevelopment. I'm pleased with the resolution to allow residential use on Site Five. However, because the design guidelines could add unnecessary cost, I recommend eliminating the draft guidelines to allow potential cost savings. Creating a large, diverse, affordable building for low and moderate income tenants in this high-income neighborhood sends a beautiful message to the world. Special outreach to 9/11 survivors and first responders would make this development a rare opportunity for New Yorkers to say, "Yes, in my backyard." We should seek funding that would not deplete the affordable housing development pipeline, and I hope we can really all work together to achieve this goal and create such a beautiful residential and appropriate development on this site. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak and for putting up with my technical difficulties. The hearing is a pleasure so far, too.
Thank you for your testimony. So we'll now move to our second set of 10 speakers. I'll read all 10 names. If you hear your name or you see your name on this list, you can assume you'll speak in about the next half an hour. The next 10 speakers will be Mariama James, Joe Woolhead, Robert Marcucci, Li Zhao, Linda Roche, Jill Goodkind, Richard Leland, Matt Cap, Victoria Hillstom, and Frank Hesse. I believe out of that list, several people are not present at this time. So if you are a representative for one of the following folks, or if you are just joining us by phone, please email help@publicworkspartners.com. That's also showing at the bottom of the slide if you want to speak, if you are or want to speak for Mariama James, Li Zhao, Matt Cap, Frank Hesse. If you are on the call, you may also just raise your hand. So we'll go to the first person we know is present, Joe Woolhead. Joe Woolhead, you may enable your video. enable your video and audio and get ready to speak.
Hello, can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, can you see me as well?
We can't see you, but we can hear you.
Okay. The development of Five World Trade Center as an affordable residential building would be a massive win win for the downtown community. The Five World Trade Center will help to bring in more people of diverse backgrounds to add to the rich heritage of Lower Manhattan. And also to continue the revitalization of the area, not only after the nine eleven attacks, but also the ongoing pandemic, which has heavily impacted everyone here. I've worked as a photographer principally on the World Trade Center for over seventeen years. And in that time, I've seen many changes, mostly for the good. Each new building downtown has only added to the regeneration of Lower Manhattan. During these pandemic times, I think it's important that Five World Trade Center is constructed so thousands of tradespeople can be gainfully employed. Each new building under construction benefits the wider community, too. Once the building is complete, many more people will be able to enjoy living downtown. I have seen Lower Manhattan go from a terribly depressed area just after nine eleven to a place of immense growth and opportunities for everyone, either working, visiting, or playing here. It's critical that we stay focused and continue to develop this area. Five WTC is a significant mixed use development for this community. I would like to see the downtown area thrive and be a beacon of hope for the rest of America and the world. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak on this matter.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker will be Robert Markucci.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. I'm sorry about the video at the moment. But I just wanted to say that I am a consultant and I've been a fixture in the downtown Manhattan WTC neighborhood for the last fourteen years. As a creative producer, I have had a hands on experience in the growth of this area as a videographer and marketing associate, meeting thousands of folks who have helped rebuild Lower Manhattan, as well as guests ranging from family, community, film, TV, and other entertainment personalities over the years, helping to create a new vibrant world in this neighborhood. This is a tremendous accomplishment so far, I think, this continually growing part of the city. There is a beautiful growth of spirit and energy that has given me optimism and joy, seeing how everyone is becoming part of an exciting new period in history. The idea of a new WTC five building being residential with affordable housing could not be a better suited addition to the city. And in particular, this neighborhood, the cultural benefits and response to this would be immense, I believe. The notion of having a more diverse community can only strengthen the optimism and newly seen beauty of the neighborhood and would be a role model for other communities, I feel. I have been within the new, I've been in the new WTC building for many years and have so enjoyed and felt blessed to work in such gold lead standard conditions and feel other diverse groups should also have this wonderful experience as well. I have worked closely with the creative forces who have helped build these brilliant structures.
I'm sorry, I believe you may have accidentally gone on mute.
I believe I left off, I have worked closely with the creative forces who have helped build these brilliant structures. And I feel quite confident that WTC five will be just as wonderful. And that's it.
Great. Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker will be Linda Roche. Linda Roche, if you are here and ready to begin, you may turn on your video and audio.
Yes, hi. Thank you for, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Linda Roche. I am a forty three year resident of the Financial District and a survivor of nine eleven, having worked and been at Seven World Trade Center on the morning of September eleventh. I wanted to add my voice to the community at large asking for one hundred percent affordable housing. I mean, how often do you hear a community advocating for one hundred percent affordable housing in a building this size? It's unusual, but the, but the community feels that this is a very necessary addition to the community. We do not have a lot of affordable housing. On my side of the town by the seaport, Howard Hughes wants to build a mega tower and offered a few affordable housing to actually get his proposal through. This is a different story. This is an opportunity for the people of Lower Manhattan and the survivors of nine eleven, their children, the first responders to be given a seat at the table where they might be able to live and enjoy Lower Manhattan as I have for forty three years. So I would urge the people at large who are determining this to actually think very carefully about giving the building more affordable housing. And if, on the occasion that it doesn't work out that they don't get full affordable housing, that the people who are in the affordable housing units get full use of any amenities that are put into the building and they are not shut out like the paupers. I honestly think that this is an opportunity that should not be missed and LMDC, I think, should be really working with the community and making this happen. So I appreciate your letting me speak and thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Our next speaker will be Jill Goodkind. Jill Goodkind, if you are present and ready to speak, you may turn on your video and audio.
Okay, I'm gonna be just audio because my video was.
No problem.
Okay, so my name is Jill Goodkind and many of you knew my late husband, Tom, who died from nine eleven cancer. Tom advocated for over a decade to make Five World Trade Center one hundred percent affordable. I'm requesting the currently proposed design guidelines be removed from the plan modification proposal and the board's determination be solely on the modification to make the proposed building residential. The mandatory design guidelines LMDC is proposing lock in high cost design requirements like rounded glassy corners and they'll be locked in for any building built at the site. There is no reason to include those restricted mandatory guidelines in the plan to make the building residential and especially not at this time. Lower Manhattan is losing its limited stock of affordable apartments. It's at an astonishing rate. And yet, LMDC and Port Authority seem determined to make this a majority luxury building. However, Five World Trade Center can bring thirteen hundred units of desperately needed affordable housing to the area. We need a building that houses New Yorkers from the very lowest incomes to moderate housing that's inclusive, that represents the diversity of our entire city, that includes deep affordability, housing for central workers, for single parent families, and importantly, housing for nine eleven survivors and first responders. Since nine eleven, billions of our tax dollars and benefits meant to rebuild this community were used by developers to create a glut of high, high priced new buildings. The LMDC itself received over two point eight billion in housing and urban development funds. Let's put something good there, something that celebrates life and will stand as a symbol of our values. A place where New Yorkers from all walks of life, all races and identities who make this city what it is can afford to live. Not another unneeded tower for the wealthy. Public land for public good. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker will be Richard Leland. Richard Leland, if you're ready to speak, you may turn on your video and unmute your audio.
I'm ready. I don't get my, see my video.
Yep, we can see you.
Okay. Good evening. I'm Richard Leland of Acroman LLP and I represent the owner of Club Quarters World Trade Center Hotel and the World Center Hotel, which are located at one forty before Washington Street, across the street from Site Five. On behalf of our client, I thank the LMDC board for providing us this opportunity to speak this evening. Our client also thanks the LMDC and the ESD for the hard work they have, they have done and continue to do to develop the World Trade Center site and to enliven Lower Manhattan as a destination for New Yorkers and national and international visitors. Our client has had a long and deep commitment to the economic and cultural development of Lower Manhattan, particularly the areas within and adjoining the World Trade Center site. Our client signed a contract to enter into a ground lease for the site of its hotels just prior to the nine eleven terrorist attack. The building was substantially destroyed, yet our client retained its space in Lower Manhattan and elected to enter into the ground lease and progress and progress and the development proceeded with the development of the site in two thousand and three. Due to delays in rebuilding in part relating to environmental conditions at the World Trade Center site, the hotels weren't open until two thousand and ten at considerable additional expense to our client. The entrance to the hotel, which had a total of four hundred and twenty one rooms, was initially planned to be on Cedar Street, but due to the placement of retaining law for Liberty Park and the sighting of the vehicular security center below the park, the entrance was moved to Washington Street, directly across from the proposed placement of a loading dock towards that cut for Site Five and the loading docks for Site Five. Our client supports the proposed redevelopment of Site Five and recognizes the market facts that drive the desire to develop Site Five to the mixed use rather than another large office park. However, it is concerned about the placement of a loading dock in close proximity to the entrance to the hotel. That placement creates a serious potential for safety issues and conflict between trucks moving in and out of a loading dock and cars, taxis, and pedestrians entering the hotel. Washington Street is a narrow street and trucks backing into loading docks have the potential to block traffic and interfere with guests entering and leaving the hotel. Moreover, our client is concerned about the potential noise impact to guests caused by truck movements and about potential odor emission impact from mechanical equipment and HVAC lubers to be located on the third floor of the new building facing the hotel. These concerns do not appear to have been adequately addressed in the environmental assessment and require further analysis, as well as an analysis and consideration of alternative locations for the loading dock. Thank you for your time and attention and we will be submitting further written statements prior to the closing of the comment period on February fifteenth.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker will be Matt Cap. Matt Cap, if you are ready to speak, you may turn on your video and audio.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Matt Cap. I'm the co-producer and writer of the documentary Sixteen Acres, which covered the struggle to rebuild, rebuild Ground Zero in the decade after nine eleven. And I also recently wrote a historical book called A Century Downtown, which tells a hundred year history of nineteen twenty two to twenty twenty two. So I'm going to be very brief and I've studied the Lower Manhattan for years now, been a part of it. And there's just a few things I want to point out. The residential population has more than tripled since nine eleven. That's extraordinary change down there. And even before COVID, nearly thirty percent of people who live downtown also work downtown. And that's one of the highest work live ratios in the country. So it really is an extraordinary sustainable mixed use neighborhood. And key to that is having a sizable residential population. And whatever we can do to keep going in that direction, I think is, is important. And that's really all I wanted to say. I'd hate to go back to the days when it was just the Financial District, when it, when it cleared out after five PM and you could roll a bowling ball down Broadway. That was, that seemed to me such a waste of this crown jewel of this great city of ours. And I will leave it at that. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. Our, one moment please, just navigating back over, our next speaker will be Victoria Hillstone. Victoria Hillstone, you may turn on your video and audio and let us know when you're ready to speak.
Hello.
Hello, we can hear you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone, for having me. My name is Victoria Hillstrom. We have been residents of Lower Manhattan at three eighty five Greenwich, AKA seventy one North Moore, both buildings combined floors two, three, and four since nineteen eighty two. Our loss were the cutoff on nine eleven and of course, none of us will ever forget the tanks rolling down the street. Our wonderful neighbor, Robert De Niro, was the only one with generators feeding our first responders while our first responders lined West Side Highway, waiting to recover. People that never came out of those buildings alive. We made a promise to our first responders on nine eleven that we would never forget. And while although I have much respect for Larry Silverstein, I'm certain that Brookfield would like to be good neighbors. We absolutely demand that these buildings are one hundred percent affordable. First and foremost, the Deutsche Bank building was destroyed by fire and a number of firemen died in those buildings over the DOB's negligence, very similar to the fires in the Bronx over the weekend. Moreover, this building was bought by HUD and whatever little deal memo that Michael Bloomberg signed, Michael Bloomberg can take out his checkbook and satisfy the Port Authority. I am very dear friends with Ron Perlman and Dr. Anna Chapman that are working on one of the buildings in the Five World Trade. This is public land. Those terrorists took aim at our homes on nine eleven. They sought to compromise everything we believe in, in this country. And one of those things is our ability to live and work in Lower Manhattan affordably. I am also a designer and I have designed prototypes for fairly, fairly many famous luxury stores. There is absolutely no reason that this building would even be mixed use. Retail, our malls, Brookfield, Columbus Circle, Hudson Yards are to be, there's no nice way to say it. They're an absolute abortion. Our retail has been closed one by one. We want this building to be one hundred percent affordable housing. We are willing to go to the president. We are certainly willing to look to HUD. We ask that these carve outs or whatever restrictions that they're trying to pass to satisfy Larry Silverstein. Mr. Silverstein got three billion dollars, as I recall. We had forty billion dollars to rebuild Lower Manhattan after nine eleven. The money went to the, to Bank One, it went to build the New York Times, it went for everything but Lower Manhattan. Very little money stayed in Lower Manhattan. We made a promise on nine eleven that we would never forget and to the residents of Lower Manhattan.
Thank you for your testimony. I'm sorry you exceeded your time allotment, so please feel free to submit your comments also in writing to the, to the, to the ESD and the LMDC. So at this time, it is six thirty, which is halfway through our, our planned public hearing. We are going to take a brief ten minute break to give our ASL interpreters and stenographers a moment to rest. At this time, I will, I'm going to read out the list of the next ten speakers. If you are, if you see your name or you hear your name on this list, you'll know that you will be in the group that will speak immediately after our ten minute break. So those names are Charlie Samboy, Reggie Thomas, Lucy West, So those names are Charlie Samboy, Reggie Thomas, Lucy West, Mark Murphy, David Stanky, Henry Gibson, Todd Fine, Emily Hellstrom, Adrienne Sosin, and Sarah Castle. So we are now going to take a brief 10-minute recess. We will reconvene at 6:40 PM. We can start the 10-minute clock now. And at that time, the list, that list of speakers that I just read out will be the first speakers to provide their testimony. So thank you for your patience. We'll see you at 6:40 PM. And Sarah Castle. I believe that about three of these registered speakers are not, are not visible. So if you are, are speaking on behalf of Lucy West, Henry Gibson, or Adrienne Sosin, please raise your hand or send an email to help@publicworkspartners.com so that we can make sure to call on you. All right, Charlie Samboy, thank you so much for your patience. We're ready for you when you're ready to begin.
Thank you, Celeste. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you to the ESD for providing us this opportunity to testify. My name is Charlie Samboy. I am Director of Government Affairs at the New York Building Congress. The Building Congress is comprised of more than 550 organizations and 250,000 skilled professionals across the building industry. We seek to promote the economic and social advancement of our city and its residents. And as such, we support the redevelopment of World Trade Center Five and the revitalization of Lower Manhattan through the proposed amendments to the GPP. New York will never reach its fullest potential until we have 24-hour neighborhoods across the five boroughs that diversify communities, integrate affordable housing, and connect residents to all the wonderful amenities that our city has to offer. It is in the best interest of all New Yorkers that we explore all avenues to bring permanent affordability on publicly-owned sites such as this, and we are proud to support this amended GPP. Lower Manhattan has seen a tremendous recovery following the tragic events of 9/11. The economic growth and vitality of the neighborhood has defied all odds and shown that New York has the capacity to overcome even the most challenging of circumstances. However, over the last two decades, the community has also lost a considerable number of affordable housing units due to the privatization of co-op buildings and many buildings leaving affordability programs once they expire. World Trade Center Five is an opportunity to deliver on Lower Manhattan's dire need for new residential units that will complement the growth of the neighborhood and its attractiveness for families. With the development of 1,200 units of housing, including 300 that will be permanently affordable, we could, we could help make Lower Manhattan a truly mixed-use district and one that supports small businesses that depend on a steady flow of pedestrians, something that has been a challenge throughout the COVID-19 pandemic. Additionally, the Building Congress supports the need for investing in construction and projects and policies that fuel the city and state's economies. Building is one of the best ways to get out of the economic crisis, accelerate our recovery, and employ thousands of workers. This project will, is estimated to create 10,000 construction jobs, generating 1.9 billion in economic output during the construction phase alone and 1,900 permanent jobs upon completion. These are jobs that have the capacity to elevate families and gainfully employ those affected by the economic crisis. In closing, developing solely needed affordable housing is, is in a sustainable and energy-efficient way while providing community facilities will complement the World Trade Center campus and the broader neighborhood tremendously. All of this can be achieved with this revised GPP presented here today by Silverstein, Brookfield, Omni and their partners. We applaud them for their vision to create a world-class mixed-use residential project that is critical to New York's future. And we asked the ESD Board to invest in our state's economic success by approving this GPP. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker will be Reggie Thomas. And Reggie, I believe you can unmute yourself and begin when you're ready.
Great. Thank you, Celeste. Good evening. My name is Reggie Thomas. I serve as Senior Vice President for Government Affairs at the Real Estate Board of New York. REPTME is the city's leading real estate trade association, which represents commercial, residential, institutional property owners, builders, managers, investors, and other organizations that are active in New York City real estate. Thank you again for the opportunity to testify this evening. It's clear we have a housing crisis in New York with increasing rates of homelessness, overcrowded households, and few available affordable options. According to the most recent U.S. census from 2010 to 2020, the number of New York City residents grew by roughly 630,000 people, but we only created enough housing for 206,000 in terms of units. Lower Manhattan is a vibrant neighborhood with great access to jobs, transit, parks, and schools. But housing is so critical for this community. To put in context, in terms of New York City, New York City's housing production lags behind 17 other major metropolitan areas throughout the U.S., including Seattle, Austin, San Francisco, and Los Angeles. By every track measure, New York needs more housing, but especially housing for our most vulnerable people. Over the last 20 years, Lower Manhattan has lost affordable units as cooperative buildings and rental complexes exit or age-out-of-state programs. The map of constructor placement of affordable units in this neighborhood is challenged with restrictions to residential density, high land values, and labor costs all contributing. That's why the opportunity here at Five World Trade Center is so important. If the project plan is amended to permit residential use, a mixed-use building here will deliver approximately 1,200 residential rental apartments, of which 300 will be permanently afforded. With finite public dollars available and limits on bonds and tax credit for affordable housing from the federal government, importantly, the development team will deliver these necessary units without public subsidy and with permanent affordability. The development will also play a critical role in the city's recovery from the pandemic. As is noted by many other speakers before, these thousands of construction jobs, as well as the permanent jobs that emanate from this project, is so critical as we rebound from the pandemic. Importantly, it'll also maximize revenue from the public, including the Port Authority, which has invested hundreds of millions of dollars already in the Trade Center site. Lower Manhattan is a successful live-work-play neighborhood. It is appropriate that the new development that adds significant square footage to the neighborhood and the special campus continue to that sphere. The new housing, the development, and completion of the World Trade Center campus and the new community services the project will add are exciting, important, and appropriate changes to the project. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker will be Mark Murphy. Mark Murphy, you may enable your video and audio and get ready to speak.
Hi, how are you? Celeste, thank you.
Good thanks.
I don't know if you can see me. I have no idea.
We can see you.
Well, very good. I see you. Good. I'm Mark Murphy. I am a longtime New Yorker and community advocate. I, I lost my brother-in-law on 9/11, and actually, today's his birthday, Alex Simon, so we all say a prayer for him. My father was a member of Congress, Jack Murphy, from Lower Manhattan, for his decade, a proud progressive who funded the infrastructure so that we could have what is today Battery Park and World Trade Center. I have worked downtown in the World Financial Center and know firsthand how important this hub is to the economy of New York City and the United States. And yes, New York's housing crisis requires more housing in all boroughs, at all price points. And Five World Trade Center will also provide needed market-rate housing and community and public amenity space, helping complete the exciting and needed revitalization of the World Trade Center and Lower Manhattan. The development will also play a critical role in the city's recovery from this pandemic. It's projected to create 10,000 construction jobs, union construction jobs, good-paying jobs with protections and with pensions, and close to 2,000 permanent jobs, generating close to $1.9 billion in economic output. Importantly, it'll also maximize revenue for the public, including the Port Authority, which has invested hundreds of millions of dollars in rebuilding the Trade Center site. Our dollars they've reinvested. We need this mix, these mixed-use buildings to be built and built so that New York City can recover. Again, thank you, Celeste, and thank you all for taking the time to come tonight.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker will be David Stanka, or Stanky. Apologies for the pronunciation. David, if you are ready to speak, you may enable your audio and video. Hey, hi, we can hear you, and I think you're not on mute. Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Very good. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I am David Stanka. I live, I lived since around 2000 on Liberty Street, the, the block just between the proposed new building and World Trade Center Four. So, right in that corner. We rebuilt our building and our block got put back together. And I have watched very carefully all of the developments at the World Trade Center ever since. And while it is doing quite well now, and I think it's a beautiful development, and it's, it's, you know, very, it's a, it's a great place to live, it's a great place to work and to be around. I have, it has taken a long time to get there, and I think there were a number of mistakes that have been made in the path to getting there. As part of the community, I must also say that we got down to a very small number of people. And it was a balanced community of people of various economic backgrounds. And I think it was a tight community, and I think we benefited from having a diverse community through those tougher years. And I look forward to the opportunity to continue to develop housing that, that is appropriate for all income levels and a range of people. So I would have preferred that the commercial development continued as planned, but market realities were such that it makes sense to convert World Trade Center Five to a residential or multi-use building at this time. That makes complete sense, given the current economic conditions. I think the other aspect of considering the economic conditions that we have to look back at, though, is that there were many mistakes that were made, mistakes that were very costly. And the World Trade Center development ended up being a very expensive development because many decisions were made not based upon financial reality, but based upon sort of emotional impulses. And managing costs at the site has seriously damaged the Port Authority's economic position. I know driving in and out of the toll booths is hugely expensive, getting in and out of New York now. And a lot of these costs were because money at the World Trade Center was not managed as carefully as it should have been. I think the World Trade Center site is an ideal site to put market-rate housing. And I'm glad that it's going to be mixed-use housing as in the current plan. But I think it's very important that this building be as profitable, maybe not as profitable as we can make it, but it be designed in a way that meets the, the look and feel of the World Trade Center site as it is, and that it is economically viable to the extent that it helps restore the financial stability of the Port Authority. So I, I think that the plan with the housing as specified seems to be a very good plan that will both balance the design of the site, the, the location of the residential is extraordinarily good. I think, you know, between Liberty and Cedar Street there, it is joining other residential buildings in the area. And I look forward to seeing it get built sooner rather than later, because it had, we have been very, very delayed.
Thank you. You've gone a little past your three minutes, so if you'd like to submit additional testimony, you may do so via email or mail. Thank you very much. Our next speaker will be Todd Fine. Todd Fine, you may unmute yourself. Yep, there you go. You may begin when you're ready.
Hi, yes.
Yeah, we can hear you and see you.
I'm, I'm Todd Fine. I'm a member of the Coalition for 100% Affordable Five World Trade Center. Now, the premise of this meeting tonight was supposed to be a discussion of the environmental impact findings and the general project plan modifications. And obviously, it's understandable that some members of the public would like to talk about the specific plan, especially in terms of the guidelines. But I find it concerning that lobbyists and your own developer, Larry Silverstein, sent people to talk about this plan itself, directly violating your instructions that they knew beforehand and that were announced tonight, sometimes even with overlapping language. We even began with Howard Hughes Corporation, a Texas company who has received unimaginable public subsidies, who now wants to tell New York City how it should spend its Howard, its housing subsidies. Which is interesting, because the lobbyist effort tonight is directly the Howard Hughes plan at 250 Water Street. Lots of lobbyist groups, REPTME groups, and, but also, most importantly, astroturf people. There were many people who spoke tonight who were actually directly paid by Larry Silverstein, who did not announce this. Mark Mar, Markucci had a film that was funded by Silverstein, was not disclosed. Jenny Chow, Chow is thanked by Matt Cap with a group of other Silverstein employees in, in the introduction to his book about downtown Manhattan. Joel Woolhead directly does photography for Larry Silverstein and for the 9/11 museum. Lisa Colon was a consultant to Silverstein Properties. And Mark Markucci was a consultant for Larry Silverstein, Larry Silverstein. This use of distorting this public forum is questionably even legal, but it definitely is a disrespect to all the government agencies involved. LMDC, the ESD, they should not have their meetings that are supposed to engage the public and get sincere input distorted by lobbyists and astroturf-supported by Larry Silverstein. It should, this should cause people to stop this deal and don't go down this path of having a manipulated a public process. The, Larry Silverstein has infinite time to discuss with you his feelings about it. We also don't need lobbyists generally to tell us about the economic benefits of a plan that they didn't, that isn't the subject. We also had an entity like the 9/11, or the Performing Arts Center, which did not disclose that if this land is concluded, concluded, they would get fee interest to their site without, as a function of that. That wasn't even mentioned. So I, I want to say, you know, what we need from ASD is not to talk to these developers, not to let the developers take over the conversation, manipulate these public processes, but have the working sessions that have been asked for by all of the elected officials and the real members of the community for the last year. But somehow, the developers were able to manipulate this to get to the top of the list, and it's an insult to all the government agencies, and I hope you will sanction them. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Our next speaker will be Emily Hellstrom. I believe Emily Hellstrom had turned on her video a moment ago.
Sorry, I'm outside, and of course, I'm right by Pier 40, and there is a fire truck going by. I don't know if you can hear me.
That, we can hear you. You may go ahead and give your testimony. No problem.
Thank you so much. Well, I think it is fitting, actually, that I am at my daughter's softball practice, which is at Pier 40, a piece of public land that is being used by the public for the betterment of our communities. And I believe that the same thing needs to happen at Five World Trade Center. There is something that is going on throughout our city that is really something that has been going on for many years called the public-private partnership. And as very well journaled in the Journal of Urban Affairs by Sandra Ginon, the rearranging of public-private partnerships has happened over the years, such that the public part of the deal has been completely subverted. Over time, this degrades. And basically, what happens is, once our public land is gone, it is gone. And we have seen that in Lower Manhattan. Obviously, we needed to have a huge amount of economic drivers come in and jumpstart our economy after 9/11. However, unfortunately, we have found that site after site went without real affordable housing being given back to our community, as was promised, as Jill Goodkind so rightly said, and her husband championed, that affordable housing was in the original plan, and we are now down to the last site. And it is unfortunate that the, the Port Authority is saying, well, we need the money. However, there are ways. Budgets are all about values. And we should not be ceding public land to private developers in order to reflect our budgets. Private interests are not aligned with public interests. So I urge you to not make any decisions tonight that would preclude 100% affordable housing or at the very least, an enormous amount, far more than 25% affordable housing at a site that was promised or a sort of an entire area that was promised to contain residential and affordable housing. So, and I, I will concur with Todd Fine when he says that it is deeply unfair to the public to have people speaking in sneaky ways on behalf of the developer. So, thank you so much, and thank you for holding public hearings. They are very, very important. They are bedrock of our democracy and of the founding of our nation. So I don't say that lightly. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Thank you very much for your testimony. Our next speaker will be Adrian Andy Sosin. I believe you've joined us recently, Adrian Andy Sosin, if you are here.
Am I mute?
Nope, we can hear you.
Oh, good. Okay. I am a long-term downtown resident. I lived in Southbridge Towers and have lived there since nineteen seventy-six. I remember the Trade Center being built and we were there during nine eleven. My whole family lives in Southbridge, which was affordable housing until it went private. And there, it is still affordable housing. And the people who live there may be sitting in, you know, million dollar apartments, but they are not rich. And affordable housing is very needed in this city. And Five World Trade Center is a public property. It should be dedicated to affordable housing, and that's the way I feel about it. And I think that most people who live downtown want, want residents to be of, you know, the, the regular middle-class people, not necessarily rich enough to afford million-dollar apartments and their upkeep. So I am with Todd Fine on this, on this issue because I really feel like he has, he has, has investigated and has learned what needs to be done about, about Five World Trade Center. And I hope that this meeting gives, gives impetus to, uh, to, to good government people who are not going to knuckle under developers and do the kinds of underhanded things that are being done around two fifty Water Street. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker will be Sarah Castle or Cassel, Sarah Castle. You are, um, if you'd like to, yep, I see you coming on. You can also unmute yourself and speak when you're ready.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you, but your, your camera is not showing your face.
You don't need to see me, really.
Okay.
It's a long time of Gateway Plaza and a survivor of nine eleven. With the reneging of the Gateway Plaza rent controls, my family will very likely be priced out of the neighborhood. A World Trade Center five with affordable housing targeted to survivors and rescuers. Maybe, possibly we could stay in the area. Also, having raised our child in Battery Park City, we recognize that the place space available with the increase in population in FIDI in the area is ever decreasing. Few opportunities for competitive athletics, prime college application driver are available without full-size gyms for practice and games. Please include a full-size gym for neighborhood school use in the community space. And yes, go Todd Fine, go Jill Goodkind, and thanks everyone. Good night.
Thank you for your testimony. We'll now move to our next set of speakers. I'll read the names. They're also showing on your screen now. These, I believe, are mostly folks who have raised their hands since they've been on the call and were not pre-registered. And the list includes Justine Cuccia, Michael Robinson Cohen, Alec Cuccia, Nicholas Kemper, Marian Rydell, the phone number that begins with nine one seven and ends with six nine zero, Finley Hunt, and Esther Reggelson. Once this group of people has the opportunity to speak, if there is time, we will then open up for, if anyone would like to, anyone more would like to speak or would like to speak again. On this list, I believe Marian Rydell is not present. If you are Marian Rydell or are speaking on Marian Rydell's behalf, please raise your hand or email help@publicworkspartners.com to let us know you're present. And so with that, we'll move on to Justine Cuccia. You may enable your video and audio to speak.
Okay, I think I was able to do both, but we'll see.
Okay. It's perfect. We can see and hear you.
All right, sounds good. All right. Good evening, and let me begin by thanking LMDC and ESDC for having this for, for having this forum. My name is Justine Cuccia, and I'm a member of the Coalition for 100% Affordability at Five World Trade Center. I'm also a September eleven survivor who has beaten two cancers caused by exposure to toxic debris on that day. I want to emphasize a few points here. First, 100% affordability is an achievable, achievable goal based on ample precedent. Consider just one example among many. Manhattan Plaza and Hell's Kitchen with 1,689 mixed affordable income units. It has proved to be financially successful and socially sustainable since the mid nineteen seventies. Second, while I urge you to adopt the guidelines language that enables mixed-use residential development at this site, I recommend in the strongest possible terms that you change the use of the word shall to may. Language that is permissible, permissive rather than mandatory will help create 100% affordability at the site. Third, our coalition defines affordability as an integration of mixed, mixed income, low, moderate, middle, upper-middle income tenants with a preference given to nine eleven survivors, their children, and seniors. I want to say that this is a diverse, a diverse group of people from all Lower Manhattan neighborhoods, as well as first responders and their families. What Lower Manhattan needs is more diversity, socioeconomic as well as racial. The coalition's plan goes a long way to achieving that. What Lower Manhattan doesn't need is more luxury apartments, especially as so many newly built units remain vacant. As Chris Marte, our city council member said earlier, Lower Manhattan is transit, is a transit-rich neighborhood with schools and green space. We need to bring in residents who will be part of the community and not those for whom Five World Trade Center will be a pied-à-terre or part-time home. And the fact that public money is being used to build luxury homes, it's just not acceptable. Going back to the mixed-use residential and in the, in the guidelines, our neighborhood needs a community facility, part senior center, part gymnasium for the schools. We need an affordable grocery store. We need an accessible medical facilities. These all could contribute to the supporting, you know, financially supporting the building, but we need these things. The dimensions set forth in the guidelines give short shrift to these elements in favor of what appears to be a high-end expensive fitness facility. I ask also that you revisit the environmental impact study to take into account these needs in light of the current state of our community. The last thing Lower Manhattan needs is more luxury housing and more premium-priced amenities. We have enough. Making Five World Trade Center 100% affordable will help ensure that the vibrancy, stability, and diversity of Lower Manhattan in perpetuity. This is an opportunity to achieve something that is not only essential, but that is exceptional. Our community and our city is owed nothing less. And the nine eleven survivors and their families who came back to rebuild and renew Lower Manhattan deserve nothing less. Thank you.
Excuse me, I had put myself on mute. Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker will be Michael Robinson Cohen. And I believe you are ready to unmute and begin when you're, when you're ready.
Great, can you see me?
Yes.
Hello, my name is Michael Robinson Cohen, and I'm an architect who lives and works in downtown Manhattan. I'm a member of the Architecture Collective City Group, and I'm the chair of the Stand with the Coalition for 100% Affordable Five World Trade Center. I support the designation of the building as a mixed-use development, but the current 25% affordable allotment is simply not enough. The last thing the city needs is more market-rate luxury housing. Currently, the city has a surplus of market-rate housing, and many of these units remain in the middle, remain unoccupied in the middle of a housing affordability crisis. I also want to encourage the LMDC to reject the proposed design guidelines. These guidelines will make it very difficult to build an affordable tower. And as an architect, I believe we need an inspiring design that is a symbol of the city's commitment to housing all people. We don't need another generic tower that represents the power of real estate developers to define the physical appearance of the city. Yes, the cost of construction at this site would be extremely expensive. But this should not prevent the construction of 100% affordable tower, especially given the amount of public funds that have already been dedicated to this site and the commitment to affordable housing in the original plan. Ultimately, the city is the city only when a diverse group of people live within it. Making this tower 100% affordable is a critical part of making the city a place of dignity, dignity for all people. Thank you for giving me the time to make this, this comment and holding this public chair.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker will be Alec Cuccia. Alec Cuccia, if you are, um, if you're ready to begin, you may turn on your video and audio.
Cool. Can you, can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Cool, I'll leave my video off. As said, my name's Alec Cuccia. I'm not really anybody special or affiliated with any organization. I'm just a concerned member of the public that's heard about 100% affordability or the 100% affordability push for Five World Trade. I've lived pretty much the majority of my life in downtown Manhattan. I've seen firsthand how these neighborhoods have become less affordable over the past few decades. I'm lucky and grateful enough to be able to personally afford living down here for rising rent, the cost of living, all of that, and not everybody is. So I want to go on record saying that I'm in full support of 100% affordable Five World Trade. The proposed restrictive mixed-use guidelines for Five World Trade should be withdrawn and replaced with language that enshrines 100% affordability. It really makes no sense to me that we would be even discussing building more luxury apartments or fancy retail spaces when so many luxury apartments and so much retail space currently seems empty. Yeah, it's kind of baffling. Anyway, again, I want to be a, go on record saying that 100% affordability for Five World Trade is really the only correct path forward that I can see. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. And at this time, we're going to go back to someone who had been absent earlier on the, on the prior list, Mariama James, who I believe their name, yes, may not be, may not be quite right on the Zoom, but if you could just state your name and affiliation when you begin, you may begin when you're ready.
Hi, I'm Mariama James, not Carol Lambert. I would like to disclose that I am a member of Community Board One here. I'm the co-chair of the Quality of Life Committee, and I am the treasurer of Community Board One. But I'm speaking on behalf of myself. I'm also a member of the 100% Affordable Five World Trade Center Coalition. I'm one of the co-founders. And I'm a nine eleven survivor. My father passed away from a nine eleven-related disease in May of last year. And my mother is a stage four colon cancer, nine eleven-related colon cancer survivor. So this is an issue that is very personal to me. My mother worked at Deutsche Bank, ironically. And I want to go on record with my friends, neighbors, and colleagues here asking you to please, wherever your guidelines refer to shall, which we were able to determine is basically a misnomer to call them guidelines because shall means it's a requirement in your guidelines to change everything from shall to may if we're genuinely going to be fair and to allow people, the public, comment through mid-February. And also to allow for any further affordability. Of course, we want 100%, but those guidelines are really rigid and would make it impossible for affordable housing to, additional affordable housing to exist in this space. I also want to point out that the, the affordable housing that would go in there currently is like so much more other affordable housing around not just the city, but the state, the nation, not really affordable to most. And census numbers show, and you can look at the local numbers, the city numbers. Census numbers show that the majority of people of color cannot afford to move into these neighborhoods, even with affordable housing, as you, you guys refer to it, or as AMI, the HUD, you know, determines based on AMI, is affordable or the AMI that you're using. And so what happens is the neighborhood becomes segregated, whether that's intentional or accidental, that's the outcome. And public spaces, like public land, is not supposed to be segregated. You know, it's, as of nineteen sixty-five, right, with the Civil Rights Act. And so it's essentially discriminatory, and it's like essentially redlining to create affordable housing on public land that the majority of the public can't afford, that they're automatically locked out of. And that is what drives us, that is what drives me, wanting to have all those people that were described earlier, the, the unionized, all the jobs. This would, if you make it affordable, it's still going to create those same jobs. And so we want them to not only be able to have those jobs, but to be able to afford to live here and not have to go to an outer borough or across the water to another state or something to go home where they can afford to live. We want the people, teachers, you know, all kinds of union people, office, restaurant workers, delivery guys, all our essential workers that we, we call them essential, but then.
Architecture Club and Gallery City Group and in support of the Coalition for 100% Affordable WTC, we actually made a public design call for architects to propose possible designs for a 100% affordable tower. We have seen an incredible amount of enthusiasm for the call. Since we posted it last Thursday, 112 teams from around the world have registered. The deadline for submissions is February 12th, at which point we will be assembling these designs and then submitting them as a public comment before the period is over on February 15th. We hope they can serve as a way to help open up this important discussion and help the community find a feasible and compelling path to this important goal. That's all.
Great. Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker was slated to be Marian Rydell, but I believe that Marian Rydell is not present. If you are Marian Rydell or a representative to speak for that person, please email us at help@publicworkspartners.com to let us know or raise your hand. So our next speaker will be joining us by phone at the phone number that begins with nine one seven and ends with six nine zero. You may unmute yourself and let us know when you're ready to begin. If we have a participant on the, in the meeting who has the phone number nine one seven and then that ends with six nine zero, please let us know by unmuting yourself and you may give your testimony. Okay, with that, we will move on to our next speaker. Our next registered speaker is Finley Hunt. Finley Hunt, if you'd like to unmute yourself and or turn on your video, you may begin.
Yeah, hi. Hi.
Hi.
I was trying to start my video, but it's like it's not working.
I'm sorry, we can hear you, fine.
Uh, my name is Finley Hunt. I'm a retired, I, I was a retired city worker. I used to work for an agency called D-CAS. And I was a downtown resident back in the, in the eighties, four seventy-four Greenwich Street, and then I was kind of priced out of the neighborhood. I, and I'm a friend of Jill Goodkind. And I'm a friend of Jill Goodkinds and I'm a friend of the late Tom Goodkinds. I just wanted to say I am a member of the general public. I'm also a World Trade Center survivor who worked in the Dave Dickens Municipal Building during nine eleven. I wanted to say that I support the position that Site Five of the World Trade Center should be a hundred percent affordable housing. As public land, this site should maximize public benefit. There's a desperate need for affordable housing in this part of Lower Manhattan. The immediate neighborhood has become one of the most expensive and most segregated parts of New York City. The city and the state's focus on subsidizing luxury housing after September eleventh, two thousand and one continued to these unfortunate trends. Justice requires a fully affordable building. The mixed use design guidelines proposed as part of this modification of the general project plan make it more difficult for an affordable tower to be built at the site. They require expensive materials and a very particular building envelope. They should be withdrawn or remade. While I agree that the general project plan of the World Trade Center should be changed to allow for residential building, there are also many adverse socioeconomic and environmental impacts of the current plan that should have been noted in the environmental impact determination. The determination appears to go out of its way to not engage seriously with the effects of luxury towers. I think we need more affordable housing in the city and I don't want to see more luxury housing built. There's luxury housing going up all over Manhattan and we have a severe lack of affordable housing. And this neighborhood really needs affordable housing. Thank you. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it. And so then we have, I believe, one more speaker who had, whose name is on the list and an additional speaker who has requested to speak. So the the two speakers we have on deck at this point are Esther Reggelson and then Maggie Dalal. And so if you have not yet spoken, but would like the chance to provide testimony, please signal your intent by seven thirty, which is in less than five minutes by raising your hand or or dialing star nine on your telephone keypad. So with that, we will move to our next speaker, who's Esther Reggelson. Esther Reggelson, if you're ready to speak, you may unmute and turn on your video.
Hello, I'll just do audio. Can you hear me?
No problem. Yes, we can.
Okay, my name is Esther Reggelson. I have lived downtown, a block from the old Deutsche Bank World Trade Center Five site for almost forty years and I've seen a lot here. I want to echo the sentiments of everybody who so eloquently spoke for a hundred percent affordable housing. And I want to add that this neighborhood was destroyed twice by two acts of eminent domain, one for the Brooklyn Battery Tunnel and one for the World Trade Center site. And it destroyed an immigrant, blue collar community. And I believe that the powers that be owe this community to give more affordable housing to this neighborhood and bring back the people who were forced to leave and priced out by this sanitized version of Lower Manhattan that's been created over the last forty years. I also want to point out that I watched a fire occur at the Deutsche Bank Building on August eighteenth in two thousand and seven. I went to many meetings with the LMDC to tell them that they needed to demolish the building properly. And two firefighters, Robert Bedea and Joseph Graffanino died on that day. And I would hope that if nothing else, that this building be named for them and that it would honor their their lives to have a hundred percent affordable housing here in this neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker will be Maggie Dalal. Maggie Dalal, if you'd like to unmute and turn on your video, you may provide your testimony.
Thank you. I'm going to leave my video off. I'm at basketball practice with my daughter right now. Actually, at the downtown community center. I I'm a neighborhood resident. I actually live on Washington Street and I can see the lot from my bedroom window. So very close to home and there have been, I'm not super well informed on this issue. And there have been a lot of wonderful speakers that got up tonight, but I just wanted to say as a community member, I am in support of a hundred percent affordable housing and support the work that Todd and Mariama and Justine has done. Justine made a good point about, you know, the 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 luxury and the fitness centers. You know, we're we're at a community center right now. My daughter's able to play basketball here. There are so many other high end fitness centers, like places like Gas Hall Green in the neighborhood that are really expensive and don't cater to some of the families that live down here. So along with affordable housing, having facilities that support the community would be wonderful to see. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. And so at this point, we have reached the end of our registered speakers and it is seven thirty PM. We will continue the public hearing until eight o'clock. And so at this time, we are going to take another short ten minute break. But if anyone is on the call who would like to speak again, even if you have already provided testimony, you may raise your hand or email, excuse me, email our email address at help@publicworkspartners.com or dial star nine on your phone and you may add your name to the list to speak again. So at this time, it's seven thirty, we can start the ten minute timer. We'll take another short recess for ten minutes. And then in our final twenty minutes from seven forty to eight o'clock, we will be able to take additional speakers, even if you have spoken already during this hearing. Thank you and we'll see you at seven forty. Thank you for your patience during our brief break. And I believe we have one, we have a speaker who has raised their hand and would like to speak again. Todd Fine, you may unmute yourself and turn on your video if you'd like and provide testimony.
Thank you. Yes, yes, again, I'm Todd Fine with the Coalition for a Hundred Percent Affordable Five World Trade Center. And I had an original comment about these guidelines. But I was so shocked at the lobbyist's participation and the and this, the people who didn't disclose their affiliations with Silverstein that I had to mention that. But I did want to talk about the design guidelines. And now if you look back at the the original design guidelines for the Leibeskin Plan, you know, these were pretty early on in the phase, they are quite short. You know, some of the times they're just a few, they're just a few paragraphs. And they they do have some dimensions of a podium and what's on top of them. But they're they're like, for the actual building envelope, they're just a couple of paragraphs. And what what you have done with this mixed use design guidelines is something entirely different. They they go into a new deviation from the Leibeskin guidelines, which if they do mention materials, talk about glass into masonry and glass. So the fact you're deviating from them, I think, indicates that you could deviate more. But also they don't have the very specific dimensions of a building. They're not actually written by the specific, you know, architects or developers, as is happening here, where you have the very specific envelope mentioned. So it's a very different animal and it raises to me, it raises questions about what is the Leibeskin Plan at this point? You know, is the Leibeskin Plan becoming something that is serving Silverstein and Brookfield? Or is it actually Leibeskin's vision? And I wish we could involve Leibeskin into this process because if you go back to the selection of the Leibeskin Plan, it was really a moral statement. I mean, even though we think of it as, you know, now we just think of it as office buildings, but remember it was it was a different building that Silverstein stopped him from building, which was the Statue of Liberty. It was a message about America, about his love for America, about freedom, I guess. You had this spiral downward and he he was trying to make things about light and a moral statement in this plan. And I think if you look at what has happened with when Silverstein took over this plan, or even the LMDC in general, it's it's become something different. And so this is really, this opportunity is a chance finally to redeem the Leibeskin Plan, to be the symbol of immigration. Remember, that's what he talked about, about his story of being working class, about how to bring America together, how to bring New York together, how to find our highest values. That was what architecture was asked to do after nine eleven. And we take this plan that has this art aesthetic arc to it, that tried to do a message, even in an imperfect way. And we've turned it into something that was explicitly written by certain particular developers to serve a kind of just a basic, you know, luxury building. And I think at nine eleven, if you had told people at those hearings, Leibeskin Plan, we're going to build a luxury residential, people would have laughed at you. So now's the chance to choose justice, reject these guidelines and do the right thing.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker will be Gerald Forsberg. Gerald Forsberg, you may enable your audio and video and begin when you're ready.
Hi, thanks. I'm going to pass on the video this evening. Thank you. I just wanted to state that, you know, this will be a great addition to the community and I'm sure it'll provide many jobs and be a wonderful, wonderful asset. My concern, however, is indeed the guidelines and I'd like to, I I should preface this by saying that I am on Community Board, but I'm here speaking on behalf of myself. I'm a member of Community Board One. But I just want to say in terms of the guidelines, there's some very specific language there specifically that it talks about the materials being glass, et cetera. I I really think that these guidelines need to be opened up and if it's going to be a state of the art facility, then, you know, state of the art in two thousand and twenty-two responds to climate change. It responds to energy consumption. You know, this structure needs to be, if it's going to be glass, it needs to be double skinned or, you know, super insulated, energy producing, net positive, not only for the construction itself, but also for the community. It needs to be net positive in the community and a hundred percent affordable. You know, certainly seems like the way to go on public land. That's all I'm going to say for this evening. I really appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker will be Justine Cuccia. Justine Cuccia, you may
Yes, I'm here. Thank you. So sorry, jumping back on again, just because I want to clarify, I should have said that I'm also a member of Community Board One. And I am not speaking for Community Board One. I'm here as myself, as a as a member of the community and also as a member of the Coalition for a Hundred Percent Affordable at Five World Trade Center. And I misspoke while I was talking. Clear, our definition of the people that we want preference given to are nine eleven survivors, their families, their families, their children. And that encompasses first responders. We're looking for low and moderate and middle income people to be coming into the neighborhood, into it, into Five World Trade Center because we want it to be one hundred percent affordable. And and seniors also, but I wanted to be clear because I think I misspoke. So two things, identify myself and then clarify the class of people we want to be given preference. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. And our next speaker, who's raised their hand, is Victoria Fariello. Victoria Fariello, yes, you may unmute and begin when you're ready. We can see you.
Hi. So thanks again for holding this hearing. I'm Victoria Fariello. I'm the district leader downtown. I am also a member of the Coalition for a Hundred Percent Affordable Five World Trade Center. I am also a nine eleven survivor and I have raised my family here. I remember being pregnant with my third child and waiting for the elevator at Liberty Street to get across when they were doing construction. So I know what it means to have construction going on and I understand that people don't want a delay. But I also understand that this is a one in a lifetime and a century and it's a historical moment. And this is what we need, what we desperately need downtown is affordability. And while three hundred, any number of affordable housing units are welcome, it's not enough. It is absolutely not enough. We need to have at least the twelve hundred that we could get there. And there are ways to do that and we know that there are ways to do that. We just need people to get on board with that. So I think there's that and I think I have one more. One more. So, you know, public subsidies are, you know, it is public money. So this is, it should be used for a public good. So if we need to use funds, instead of giving tax breaks to other developers to build what end up not being affordable, this is our opportunity to use the tax money to actually provide the affordability in our neighborhood, in our in our district that desperately needs it. So I just wanted to reiterate that and thank you so much again for the hearing.
Thank you for your testimony. At this time, we have no further speakers signed up, but if anyone would like to raise their hand to provide testimony, even if you've testified already. I know we still have, let's see, it looks like we have Taylor Banning has raised their hand. Taylor Banning, if you'd like to unmute and enable your video, you may go ahead and speak.
Thank you. Taylor Banning, she/her, just wanted to add on to my testimony from earlier that while three hundred units of affordability is a nice gesture, it is not enough. And any more additional units of luxury will just add to the already existing empty units of luxury right around Site Five. And someone has mentioned on this call, I think it's been mentioned a few times, we are in a housing crisis from COVID, from issues of access to jobs, inequity. We don't need any more empty luxury. We don't need any more luxury built. And this is really a truly a chance to provide affordability, which is what we need. So thank you. We want this to be residential. We're calling for that. But the guidelines cannot restrict the chance for more affordable units built here. And have a good night. Thank you all for staying on for so long. We hope to continue engaging in this conversation.
Thank you for your testimony. So our our public hearing will end at eight o'clock PM, which is in just under ten minutes. We welcome if anyone else would like to provide testimony during that time. Please raise your hand or dial star nine on your on your keypad on your phone. Hi, at this time it's 7:55 and I first wanted to just point out that, um, the hearing will end at eight o'clock PM. Um, but if you have any additional testimony or would like to submit a, a written copy of your testimony that you have already submitted, you may submit, you may submit that via email at wtc site five at esd.ny.gov. And I believe we also have, uh, another speaker who raised their hand, um, under Carol Lambert's name. If you, if you are the speaker who raised your hand, you may, um, unmute or turn on your video and let us know if you're ready to speak.
Hi, yes, this is Mariama James again. I, I take my back down. I figured if we, we had the time, uh, I did want to mention that, um, there's a lot of support also for us. We have, um, we see the number of letters from, um, local officials, from members of the Arab community, community board one passed a resolution in support of this. We have the support of all 72 district leaders across Manhattan. So not just people from Lower Manhattan, but all of the, um, representatives across the county and, um, people really want to see this happen. Thank you.
Thank you for that testimony. And certainly you should submit those letters and other testimony as, um, as comments to, um, either via email to wtc site five at esd.ny.gov or to esdattentionwtc site five proposed amendment at six 33 Third Avenue, 37th floor, New York, New York, 10017. At this time, it is eight o'clock PM, which is the closing time for our public hearing this evening. Thank you to everyone who has been a part of this hearing tonight. Um, thank you to the 60 people who are still with us. We had over 100 attendees this evening, uh, well over, over 110, I believe, at one point. So thank you all for, um, for being a part of this hearing this evening. As a reminder, this was a public hearing for the proposed modifications to the World Trade Center Memorial and Cultural Program General Project Plan. Written comments will be accepted until February 15th, 2022 at five o'clock PM, at which point the public comment period will close. And just to reiterate again, written comments may be submitted to wtc site five at esd.ny.gov or six 33 Third Avenue, 37th floor, New York, 10017. And a stenographic transcript will, of tonight's public hearing, will be made available on the ESD website as well as the LMDC website. You may find that and additional project information within the next few days at esd.ny.gov forward slash wtc site five. Again, thank you for joining us this evening and have a good night.